Item 51A is an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Bear County Hospital District doing business as University Health System for adolescent health services to prevent teen pregnancy for the San Antonio Metropolitan Health District's Teen Pregnancy Prevention Medicaid 1115 waiver program in an amount up to $325,000 for a term commencing October 1st, 2017 to September 30th, 2018 and further provides two one-year renewal options.
Councilman Brockhaus.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I begin a commentary on this, I believe Dr. Bridger may have a presentation and there are citizens signed up to be heard, so I'll yield the floor to Dr. Bridger for a brief presentation and then for citizen comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Dr. Bridger will hear your presentation and then there are several citizens signed up to speak. We'll take them at that time.
So the item before you is a contract with UHS to provide funding for both mental health services and the provision of long-acting reversible contraceptives. This is in an effort to continue to address our teen pregnancy rate. As you can see from this chart, we have been making good progress in reducing our teen birth rate here in Bear County. For the 2016 data, you can see that we continue to decline from previous years, but we are still above, almost by 50%, where the US national rate is. So background on why we would like to enter into this contract is long-acting reversible contraceptives, or LARCs, are the most effective contraceptives at preventing pregnancy when pregnancy is not wanted, but they are reversible. So when a woman decides that she would like to have a child, the method can be stopped and pregnancy can be achieved. The other portion of this is to provide behavioral health or mental health services, and that's in response to some research that we did that identified the fact that it's not enough to just provide education in schools and provide access to medical services. There are some mental health issues at the root of some of the high-risk behaviors that we see, and we need to be able to address those as well. So this agreement would be with University Health Systems to provide no-cost LARCs for female teens ages 13 to 19, as well as mental health services for both males and females, and parental or guardian consent is required. And in this case, a minor is under 18. So the fiscal impact associated with this, the contract amount would be for $325,000. That would be funded through the Medicaid 1115 waiver, so there is no effect to the general fund. And the recommendation is to agree to enter into this contract for the provision of both of those services.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bridger. We have several citizens signed up to speak. We'll begin now with Jack M. Finger.
Good afternoon, Mayor Nuremberg and other members of our illustrious San Antonio City Council. For the record, my name is Jack M. Finger. Let's say that you are an integrity-challenged employee of the city's health department, and you want to do an integrity-challenged initiative like, oh, using tax dollars, national, federal, statewide, wherever, to fund a teen pregnancy prevention program, which is really more like a teen promiscuity promotion program. In other words, the tax dollars are going to go to distribute birth control devices to teenagers. Yeah. And you know that citizens, taxpayers, Christian service who pay for these things, they don't like it, and you know you might have opposition for it, but you have to go through, for the most part, an integrity-challenged city council to get it through. So what do you do? How do you do it? Do you hold press conferences and public hearings and let people advertise it? No, you may do like the San Antonio Independent School District did a few weeks ago and try to sneak it right on through with a mundane language on an item there. You know, like this one right here. Where is it? It's item 51 on today's agenda, way down there, page 14 out of 20 pages. Yeah. It was to say, "Ordinance authorizing agreement with Bear County for adolescent health services to prevent teen pregnancy." Hmm, what does that mean? $325,000 smackers for that. And the second part says, "Provide in-school behavior and mental health counseling." $216,000 for that. Okay. And so, all mundane language doesn't tell anything about teen promiscuity, Jack. What's the matter with you, Jack? Come on. Well, you tried that. You searched and you searched, and finally buried on page two of a backup document, way down there, it says, "Providing long-acting reversible contraceptive methods," there. Yeah. Oh, but don't worry, Jack. Parental guardian consent will be required for teenagers 17 and younger who receive services A and B. Well, what if that guardian is, say, the teenager's pimp, or her boyfriend who says, "I am the guardian"? Is there any requirements for proof of guardianship? Huh? No. And, you know, I think, Mr. Mayor, you received a letter from the Archdiocese on this. We would like you to read that letter so that people can know that there's more than just a few people concerned about this. We want to hear what our religious leaders say about it as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Finger. Rihanna Fernandez?
Good afternoon, Mayor Nuremberg and City Council members. My name is Rihanna Fernandez, and I'm here to support MetroHealth's initiatives to prevent teen pregnancy. While I am not a teen parent, I know teens who have experienced a teen pregnancy, and I've seen how hard it is. I believe that it is important for me to be here in hopes to speak on behalf of San Antonio teens. For example, one of my friends, she was on drugs and got pregnant with a baby. The baby was born premature birth, and it did have some health issues. In the end, it did pass away, and I feel as if my friend had the counseling or other health services, this could have been prevented. Another one of my friends actually contacted me right before I came up to speak. His girlfriend is pregnant, and they're not sure what to do. He said, "Well, what are you doing at City Hall?" And I said, "Well, I was speaking. I'm going to be speaking about proposed services." I was letting him know about it, and he said, "Well, that's something that I need. That's something that I can use." And I said, "I can tell that it would be very impactful for them." So it would be useful to have this option of mental health counseling for the parents, for teen parents. Prevention education is good, but there are teens that need to have preventive health services, too. We should provide the opportunity to teens. We should provide the opportunity and have parents and teens make their own decisions based on their needs. I'm proud to say that I was part of the San Antonio delegation last year who won the All-American City Award. This was because of the creative and effective programs that we have the youth. MetroHealth's teen pregnancy prevention initiatives are well-known, and we have seen the progress. I hope that you do consider the voice of many teens, especially those for our community, where we still have high teen pregnancies, and approve MetroHealth's initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Patricia Fernandez?
Good afternoon, Mayor Nuremberg, City Council members, City Manager. My name is Patricia Fernandez, and I am here as a parent of two teens and to support MetroHealth initiatives to prevent teen pregnancy. Some families are fortunate enough to have health insurance to take their teens to a doctor, but many families cannot afford to. They cannot afford the most effective health services. I believe that all families should have initiatives and have access to the most effective health services, especially when it comes to their children. MetroHealth's initiatives do help to prevent teen pregnancies, but they're also making a positive impact on poverty, graduation rates, child abuse, and neglect, and many other social and health issues in San Antonio. Let's continue to be a community where we provide access to the most basic needs. From my understanding, MetroHealth's initiatives and services will require parent consent for minors. This is a very important requirement as it leads to open lines of communications between parents and teens regarding the need for prevention of pregnancies. I would rather have the conversation with my daughter about methods available for preventing teen pregnancy rather than finding out that she is confiding in another teen about the That way, I would be able to guide my daughter with the best knowledge of and access to preventative health services. From my knowing this, shouldn't we as parents and teens make those decisions together about their health? They just need the opportunity and the access to this information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Janet Rialini?
Good afternoon, Mayor Nuremberg, City Council members, City Manager Scully. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. Janet Rialini. I'm a physician, founder of Healthy Futures of Texas, former employee of the Metro Health Department, and I'm here to express my strong support for MetroHealth's initiative to prevent teen pregnancy. Our mission at Healthy Futures is to support the development of strong families and positively impact our community and our whole state by reducing teen and unplanned pregnancy. And this is really an initiative that can help in major ways in that regard. We've already made tremendous progress, as you've seen from Dr. Bridger's presentation, and the progress that we've made needs to be continued because we're still way higher in terms of rates and risk for many of the young people in our community. A comprehensive approach is what the Metro Health Department is using. So it's not just about clinical services. It's also about encouraging parents to talk to their families, to talk to their teenagers, encouraging teens to talk to their parents or other trusted adult. It's about education, about information and skills and refusal skills and goals and dreams and healthy relationships. It's about all that. But we also know that a comprehensive approach includes the prevention of contraceptives. And in the 21st century, we have modern contraceptives that are way more effective than what we had when I was a teenager, which was about 120 years ago. The long-acting reversible contraceptives really have like 1/20th of the failure rate, and it's been shown that for most women, that is an important consideration, and many women would choose that. But a lot of women and a lot of teens and a lot of parents don't know that, and the cost factor is in the way because the insurance companies and the programs we have don't pay the full cost of the device. They're very safe. They are much, much safer than pregnancy, so it's kind of like, what do you compare it to? We'd like for young people not to need these things, but we know that a lot of them do. It's recommended by the American College of OB-GYN and by the American Academy of Pediatrics and by the World Health Organization and by the CDC that teens have access to these, too. So this project is not promoting the use of these. It's reducing the barriers and improving access to these for sexually active teens with parent consent. So I urge you to approve this proposal, and I look forward to much more improvement and lots of healthy teens in our community.
Thank you, Dr. Rialini. Liz Escobar? Liz Escobar? Vanessa Lopez?
So my name is Vanessa Lopez. I am a program supervisor for the Health Collaborative, whose mission is to improve the health status of the community through collaborative needs. My focus is on sexual health, both to raise awareness of sexual health and to implement evidence-based programs to prevent teen pregnancy. I am here today to support the San Antonio Metro Health District's use of waiver funding dollars on the contract with the University Health System, sorry, excuse me, to provide long-acting reversible contraceptives to uninsured or underinsured female teens. As you know, the teen pregnancy rates in Bear County are among the highest in Texas and significantly above the national average. In the past years, we have seen teen pregnancy rates go down, but this has only been possible because of the San Antonio Partners' continued collaborative response with both education and resources to youth that empower them to make safe and informed decisions. Funding for effective contraceptive methods is very limited for low-income women of all ages in Bear County. The agreement with UHS would include the provision of long-acting reversible contraceptive methods, including IUDs and arm implants, to female teens between the ages of 13 and 19 years old, who are uninsured or underinsured. Parents' consent is required for minors. Long-acting reversible contraceptives are FDA-approved and have been found to be one of the most effective contraceptive methods, with less than one pregnancy per 100 women per year, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. The long-acting reversible contraceptive will be provided with parental consent under the direction of a licensed medical provider. UHS will provide other contraceptive methods if a teen does not choose a long-acting reversible contraceptive. Thank you for helping to protect our community and prevent teen pregnancy through the use of the waiver funding by MetroHealth.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Patrick Von Dolan?
My name is Patrick Von Dolan. I come on behalf of San Antonio Fam Association, representing over 3,000 local constituents here, and I share with you, and it's important because this is an intrinsic issue. This is above human beings' opinion because it deals with something natural. I would like to go to this first presentation, and while this is presented to you as teen pregnancy prevention, all the results come back as teen birth rates, based on her teen birth rates and under the reduction. Why is that? It's because they're not measuring whether a girl gets pregnant in the process, but whether she gives birth, meaning conception can take place in these young girls' womb, and then because of the IUD, Nexplanon or Depo-Provera, it's washed out. That's a chemical or mechanical abortion. That's what you're playing with here. And with all due respect to Dr. Janet Rialini, this is not safe. Matter of fact, it's offensive because these girls, we're talking about 13- to 19-year-old girls, because of their body construct and their age, their body parts are very constrictive. And because of that, it makes it much more difficult for an IUD to be implanted in there, and it's very easy for the uterine wall to be punctured. Is it reversible? IUDs or Depo-Provera, Nexplanon, are they reversible? Sure, you can stop taking them. You can pull them out. They have a cord that's attached to IUD, much like a tampon that a woman uses during her menstrual cycle. And because of that cord, it keeps an opening in her vagina that continues to allow bacteria in. That's very unhealthy for the girl. But back to the safety, if the uterine wall is punctured by the girl's uterine wall, we're talking about lifetime infertility, the destruction of a reproductive cycle. So what we're dealing with is a presentation proposal by San Antonio Metropolitan Health District. This is the same Metropolitan Health District that has an abortionist on staff, a former abortionist named Chi Chi Jun De Wu, who was also made medical director, almost made medical director back in August of 2015. This is an abortion proposition, and that's what you're voting on here. How is that compassionate? Y'all, just less than two months ago, voted on it to be a compassionate city. How is it compassionate to take out the pain and suffering on a young girl? By the way, these things cause them depression. I noticed in the funding that there's already planning for funding for mental and emotional depression treatment. Why is that? It's because these three things, Nexplanon, Depo-Provera, and IUDs, cause depression in girls. You're planning for an eventual failure of a young woman. It's preposterous. So how is that compassionate to plan for the destruction of a young woman? Many of these girls are dreamers. I think many of y'all stood up for dreamers against Senate Bill 4, and so these girls are marginalized, and now you're going to destroy their infants. Why not stand up for all the dreamers and their offspring? Thank you very much. Vote no against 51A.
Thank you, Mr. Von Dolan. Councilman Brockhaus?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, Dr. Bridger. Thank you, ma'am. I want to just ask a couple of questions and then make a few comments, and this has the potential to go multiple directions, and I recognize that. And there's council support for this item. I just, my first initial call to pull this is to make sure that the citizens of San Antonio know what is being voted on in their city. I think while we have wonderful arguments, and many people come up and make legitimate arguments about their lives, their friends, the people they know, there's also tens of thousands of people on the other side of that equation who believe in the proper role of government, right, in how that works in a society. They are faith-based people who would find this on its face to be not the role where they want their tax dollars going, be it federal, state, or local dollars. So my goal initially is to pull this, is to make sure that people know that these things are occurring at the city council, that we are voting on these things, and it's more of a transparency issue upfront, and I wanted, you know, to ensure that we shine a light on all items and that some of these things don't slide by on consent, especially when I have and I represent tens of thousands of people who believe this is not the highest and best use of their tax dollars, that we shouldn't be a party to this, and that from their faith perspective, this violates the very moral intrinsic values that causes them to be people of faith. So I wanted to make sure I recognize that because a lot of times, we vote on things here, and it's hard, you know, you've got to make tough choices, and people get left out of that conversation because the vote goes the other way. And just as much as we stand up here and argue and advocate, if the vote goes the other way, we should accept it and move on and go to the next issue. So my questions are this. First off, is this money, this $225,000, right, because 100 of it's going to counseling efforts, correct?
Correct.
Is the 225 programmable to any other type of birth control methodology and/or counseling? Can it be, in other words, can it be reprogrammed to anything else? Or is it specifically limited to LARCs?
No, it is not specifically limited to LARCs. It is part of the comprehensive teen pregnancy prevention program that we have in place.
Okay, so it can be reprogrammed to something else as long as it's within a comprehensive teen pregnancy prevention program?
Yes.
Or is it programmable, period?
It does not come with rules about how you have to spend it to reduce teen pregnancy. So we could spend it any number of ways. We're spending it the way evidence-based programming says works, to make sure that you have education, that you have mental health, that you have access to contraceptives, and that you have education to help parents communicate with their teens, and we're doing all of those items.
What is, so the counseling portion of it, the $100,000, what's the estimated number of teens that may receive that counseling support? Either what's estimated with that funding or what has been historically the number of teens that have received counseling?
So there are two contracts. This is the only one that got pulled specific, but the other contract is also for counseling. And... Do we know, Mario, how many people we're talking about? For the counseling, how many are in the contract?
The contract is by number of messages. Good afternoon. So there is no program that we've had in the past to give you a baseline of the number of teens who could be coming into the university health system for the mental health services. And so it's based on the number of sessions that they can provide through the contract. The other contract with communities and schools is to provide the mental health counseling specifically for teen parents. With that particular contract, the school districts do track the number of teen parents, and so we're basing that based on the ZIP codes where we have the highest teen birth rates.
So there's really not, we don't know how many teens are going to receive with any real quantitative data to say 1,000 teens are going to receive counseling for $100,000. It doesn't exist because we're creating a new baseline for this?
Correct.
Okay. Fair enough.
Right.
Thank you for that, sir.
Thank you, Mario.
So the reason I'm asking is because last year, when this was approved, I believe you said 841 teens received services, correct? I think it was 840 or 841 received services?
Mm-hmm.
And last year, was it a different type of birth control mechanism?
So they weren't limited to long-acting reversible contraceptives? It included Depo-Provera as well?
Was it the same amount of funding?
It was about the same amount, yes.
Okay, because one of the things I'm also concerned about when I look at this is, last year was 841, and the current contract says only 100, at a minimum, 100. So we don't know what they're going to perform with $225,000. So I would see that as the potential there to be a drastic reduction in services for a large number of young women. Is that fair to say?
So the reason the contract is written that way is because there are a variety of LARCs available, and they have different prices. So the contract was written to provide a minimum number, not a maximum number, but they have $225,000 to provide access to LARCs. And they will use that along with other funding sources that they have in order to serve all of the teens who come to their clinics to get these services. So I do not anticipate a decrease in the number of teens getting access to contraceptive services. What I expect is that we will have a higher percentage of teens getting on the more effective LARC.
Sorry, Jennifer Harrod, I just wanted to clarify. The services that were provided, where you mentioned the 840 teens that were served, that was actually over a three-year period, and the funding amount for UHS at that time was about $350,000 per year.
Okay, because I thought that the presentation, it gave the appearance as that it was 840. It didn't say it was over a three-year period. That's why I was curious. You know, and my goal really is to say that, I mean, we don't know, right, because we don't know what device is going to be chosen, right? So it could be the least expensive one, it could be a very expensive one. I think the range you told me was like 70 to 700. I mean, it's quite a wide range of options, right?
Right.
In a cost perspective?
Yes.
Perspective? And then, so if it's a wide range like that, we don't know how many are being served. I guess it really comes back to highest and best use of that dollars. Like, was there any rationale of thinking, hey, can we increase counseling services, mental health services, parenting services? Why would it be going towards the, so the end result is there, you're preventing the pregnancy, right? That's the symptom. The larger case is, I mean, there's a lot of issues that are going into this that I couldn't even scratch the surface on. I'm not even educated enough to speak on the multitude of issues that go into teen pregnancy and how fully it... pregnancy, on how fully admit that. But can we reach more young women through education and counseling? Can we take the money and extrapolate that out further than just saying we're going to buy 100, 200 of these? I mean, if you take the three-year average, right, of the, he says three years, 800, if we average it out, what is it, 250, 275 per year? Can't we affect and reach more young women by taking those dollars and putting it into counseling and other services to help them prevent teen pregnancy?
So...
I think, my goal is to try to say, can we do more?
I understand your goal. And I would just like to point out that when we started this program in 2013, 25% of the funding went towards contraception. This year, this proposal puts 25% of the funding going towards contraception. So again, 75% of the funding is going towards education and other activities that I think you're talking about.
On this item, I'm just curious about that, because you're including then the other item further down the agenda, because in this item, it's $325,000, of which 225 is going to LARC. So...
Right, that's one contract.
That's one contract. So I'm only referring to this contract. So in this contract, it's not 25%, right? It's, the other one doesn't include LARC, the other one includes just the mental health counseling, correct? The other agenda item?
Right. But there's a program we're talking about. So these are two contracts specific to a program, and that program is providing a lot of those services that you are talking about. And so that's why I wanted to make sure that it was clear that from the programmatic perspective, 25% of the funding is going towards contraception, and 75% is going towards education and counseling.
All right. Well, fair enough. Thank you, Dr. Bridger. I appreciate that. Thank you. Again, my goal in this is to bring to light and to make sure that we do recognize that there are a lot of people in our community that care intrinsically about their faith and about where their tax dollars and money should be going, and we should recognize that. And people believe this isn't the highest and best use, nor the role of government to be in any way, shape, or form doing this. The mental health aspects of things are very important, and I wholeheartedly support that. That's why I didn't pull the other item. This one caused me concern because of that portion in there, and can we be doing more? Can we reach more? And unfortunately, we don't really have an analytic that would tell us that we're going to reach more through one side or the other, because we're kind of creating that right now, right? I mean, that was the words, right? We're kind of creating a baseline to say this is how many people we can reach through education. And we don't even really know how many we're going to reach through the use of the contraceptive device. We don't know yet because of the cost, so it's an unknown. So I guess we're going to create that as well over time and help to understand that. So, look, I'm not in support of the item. I mean, that's kind of obvious. And I recognize the need to make sure that we're doing something for this issue. I don't have the answer for it, right? I've got to rely on the experts and yourself, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate where my colleagues are going to be on this, too. To me, it comes from a standpoint of let's make sure people know what we're doing from a transparency perspective. And then I recognize the people that I represent have vastly different views on the role of government in this, and that's what it comes down to for me. Can we get to more by reallocating the funds elsewhere? I would ask that in the future, we think about that and be respectful of the opportunity to say, can we get there? So as we develop this baseline of information, we measure what is the effectiveness in our community of the educational aspect of it, and how is that, you know, how many people are we reaching, right? Because if we're going to spend money in this field, which I do believe we should, it's the same thing as saying in the community, we want to end diabetes and obesity in San Antonio, right? That's a fair, that's a stated goal of the city. But we're not out buying lap band surgeries for citizens. We're not. We are heavily engaged in the educational aspect of the obesity programs. In some cases, we even purchased B-Cycle, right? We did other programs in the past to help educate and give positive methodologies and coaching for, you know, for decision-making, at least a healthier lifestyle. So I would just challenge in the future that, to make sure we have the information categorized, we understand what it is, so that we get the highest and best use for our tax dollars, and to be respectful of people in this community that don't want to do this, wherever they may lie, for whatever reason, right? And I respect my colleagues and their opinion on this, and this is one of those issues that's, you know, can get tough and get off the rails real quick and get highly personal. I'm not trying to be highly personal about it. What I'm trying to do is smart with the money, respectful of people's wishes and beliefs, and then try to do the right thing to reach as many people as possible, right? As many young women who are challenged with this, and I get it, it's an economic issue, it's an education issue, it's a barrier issue. But I've got to believe there's more ways we can use this type of money to get to a larger breadth of that opportunity. And I'm just asking from my side, and for a great portion of people I represent, to keep that in mind and to keep us informed about how it's functioning and what the successes and opportunities are with the program. So with that, I'll yield the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Brockhaus. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bridger. I just have some follow-up questions regarding the split from education to contraception, and you mentioned the 75-25 split. Is that the most effective way to reduce teen pregnancy? Would it be more beneficial to spend more on contraception and lessen the education?
So in an ideal world, we'd have more money to spend on everything, right? And what we're trying to find is where that sweet spot is, and we're trying to add, the new thing we're adding this year is the mental health component.
Right, and that was my next question.
So this is something that the United States has been tackling for a long time, and we have a lot of ground to make up. So we need to provide more education, and we need to provide better access to contraceptives. So it's hard for me to be able to pick which, you know, which is the better solution.
But it's not by, there's not a mandate that says you have to spend a certain amount on education versus contraception?
No.
Okay. And so I know you talked a little bit about the evidence-based as well, and this is the approach that was determined by whom that was the most successful.
So the CDC has been studying this issue for decades and has determined that there's not one silver bullet to fix this problem, that it really does require a combination of prevention through education, prevention through helping parents understand that they need to be the ones to have this conversation with their children, as well as secondary prevention. So what we see unfortunately is that once a teenager becomes a teen parent, she's much more likely to have another baby while she's still a teenager. And so the secondary prevention, making sure that she doesn't have two or three or four children while she's still a teenager, is another important component of this. And, you know, that's, one of the long-acting reversible contraceptives is the IUD, and most commonly, that's used immediately after a woman has given birth, and it's inserted into the uterus. So it's, and because it works so well, and it works for five to 10 years, and that's how we can help our teenagers wait until they're ready to have another child.
And so you answered my question about the mental health, because we've seen this now a couple of years, every two years we get this, or is it every year we have to approve the 115?
Every year.
I thought so. It seemed like it hadn't been that long since we approved the last one. But I noticed a mental health component, and that's a new program?
Yes.
And did that come from additional funding, or was that the same amount of funding that we had requested before?
It's the same amount of funding, it's just being dispersed. What we were funding previously was helping the schools implement evidence-based programming on the education side. They've been doing that enough now that we're able to redirect some of those dollars to other education and mental health programming.
Okay. Well, I think that's an interesting shift. And also regarding the timing of the contraception, because I know that these are specifically targeted, or at least if I understood it correctly, these dollars are specifically targeted for at-risk teens that would be at risk for having a second baby in their teens, or is that not this particular program?
So this program has a strong emphasis on preventing repeat teen births. But it also does some primary prevention as well. So I can't unequivocally say that all of the teenagers who get these LARCs are already going to have a child, but many of them will.
And so can you just talk a little bit about the funding requirements? So we know that this is not impacted from the general fund.
Right.
It's not money that we would vote on, we vote to accept a grant or not accept a grant. We don't, do we get to vote on, for example, each part of what the waiver funds, or we get the funding from the federal government to be distributed a certain way? Or how do we determine how that money gets distributed, because we know there's lots of programs in the 115 waiver?
So my understanding is that initially, when this was set up, it was broken out by project so that there could be discussion about one particular project over another. We are awarded a lump sum amount, and then community leaders are involved in making decisions about what we will spend that money on in order to achieve the best outcomes.
And teen pregnancy in particular always rose to the top of the...
Yes.
Of the priority list.
Priority list.
Was because we do have such high teen pregnancy rates in San Antonio. It looks like we have a national decline, and even the citywide, we have a decline. But I don't think that in certain pockets of the city, we've had a decline. And we still continue to have some of the highest child abuse rates anywhere in the state, some of the highest rates of SIDS anywhere in the state. And we know that we continue to have some of the highest teen pregnancy rates as well. So, I mean, any action we can do to eliminate those tragedies in our community, I think that we need to continue to support. So with that, motion to approve.
All right. There is a motion and a second on Item 51A. We have additional council members who'd like to speak, starting with Councilwoman Viegron.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to thank all of the women who came out to support, to voice their thoughtful support of this Medicaid 1115 waiver program. Dr. Bridger, I have a question because of many things that are happening, rhetoric around Medicaid, Medicare, Affordable Care Act. How will, if you know, and maybe Jeff is here, too, how will the proposed healthcare reform bill affect these programs, or how can it affect, if you know?
So the latest version of what I've seen allows insurers not to cover contraceptives. It allows them not to cover lots of things specific to women's health, but one of the explicit items that they are allowed to no longer cover is contraceptives.
Okay. Thank you. And many of my questions, Councilwoman Gonzalez already asked, and you were able to answer them. And I do want to thank the speakers, Dr. Rialini, for your work that you are doing with Healthy Futures. I also want to thank Ms. Fernandez and some of her remarks about, and I think even Councilwoman Gonzalez touched on it, with these rates, I know that poverty and graduation rates and child abuse, these are all, these are connections here that we see when we're looking at repeat teen pregnancies as well. And I know the counseling efforts, what's important, too, for the counseling efforts is what the young people are going through, even when they find out, or when you have to go and talk to a parent and tell them the situation that you're in, and then the next steps. So I see the benefits of all of this and how it's important for particularly young women, and I know young women in District 3 in the south side of San Antonio, because there are opportunities here that we are going to be able to break certain cycles that have existed. And, you know, Mayor, many of these things are also interrelated and interconnected of why we seem to be also an economically segregated city in the United States. So my goal is to provide the best ways to improve these outcomes for these young girls who deserve a chance to live a better life. And I believe at the local level is the last and best chance that we can give to these girls as well. And I do believe putting counseling is good before contraception, too, because we can counsel, but I think even the numbers show that these teens, even in the churches and in faith communities, are still choosing to be sexually active. So what are we going to do to help with that, to help in this area? And, you know, and that's one thing that I encourage the faith communities to talk about, but I also believe that as metro health and as a city, we need to do our part as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Viegron. Councilman Palais.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll remind my colleagues and anybody watching that the United States ranks number one among first-world countries in teen pregnancies and sexually transmitted diseases.
Where number one is bad.
Yeah, where number one is not something we want to be. Also, data, evidence-based data, shows that abstinence-only education as a government policy is not effective, and it's not effective in preventing teen pregnancies. But data does show that evidence-based teen pregnancy prevention works when there's access to education plus contraception. And we know it works, because if you just look at the Medicaid programs that fund access to contraceptives and family planning services, they have been proven to show a reduction in the incidence of teen pregnancies and births. I'll stop there and highlight pregnancies and births. Pregnancies being counted not as the number of babies that were or weren't born, but pregnancies counted by a whole bunch of other metrics, including a count of teen mothers at schools and reported pregnancies, et cetera. And this is especially true among low-income teens. How many? 1.9 million people just with that program alone. And so whether or not I or anybody else has moral or ethical or religious qualms about something like what is being proposed today, you can debate me all day long on that basis, but you can't debate me on the mathematics. And, I mean, you're entitled to your opinion, but mathematics doesn't believe in opinions. And so what we know that the mathematics reveals is that abstinence programs in lieu of contraception access and education positively correlates to increases in pregnancy. In plain English, that means that if you don't have education and access to contraception, you're going to end up with more teen pregnancies. That's just simple math. And so as far as the role of government and whether or not, you know, we ought to even be talking about this, I'll remind you that there's a document out there whose preamble says that the role of government is not just to provide defense and guarantee tranquility, you know, among society, but also to establish justice and provide for the general welfare of its populace. That's the Constitution. That's the first paragraph of the Constitution. Providing for the general welfare is something that has been debated over and over and over again, culminating in Supreme Court case law in 1936. It basically says, yeah, it says that. It's pretty clear in English. It means what it means. And it authorizes the federal government, the states, and everybody downstream to have genuine, authentic, meaningful, and purposeful conversations about what we need to do to promote the general welfare. This falls within the general welfare language. So, thanks, and I hope that these comments were helpful.
Thank you, Councilman Palais. Councilwoman Sandoval.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you to the women and the people who came out to comment. It's always very important, I feel, to hear about women's health issue from women, so I really appreciate you being here. And I would also like to thank Councilman Brockhaus for highlighting this item. As council members, sometimes we don't always see how our decisions affect community health, but this is one very clear case where we can have a tremendous impact on community health, because health ultimately affects the social conditions in our community, the strength of our workforce, and the strength of our economy here in San Antonio. And I do want to echo some of the very salient points that Councilwoman Viegron brought up. A pregnant woman, a pregnant teenage mom, is really less likely to have access to prenatal care, is my understanding, and Councilwoman Gonzalez brought this up as well. So this is going to put her at risk for poor health outcomes, her and her child at risk for things like low birth weight, premature birth weight, and, sorry, premature birth and infant mortality, which we see so much of here in... and infant mortality, which we see so much of here in San Antonio. Not only that, but she's going to be less likely to complete middle school, in some cases, high school, less likely to go to college or a trade school, less likely to have a career, and less likely to be part of the competitive workforce that we want to create here in San Antonio. So I wanted to highlight that. I also wanted to point out, you know, we had ChildSafe here this morning, and we were talking about child abuse, and Councilman Shaw said that it's wonderful that they're here, but it's so sad that we need them so badly. And it is. No one ever intends to be a bad parent or wants to be a neglectful parent, but one of the biggest risk factors for child abuse is not having a supportive network to raise your child, not having that village that it takes to raise a child. So if a teenage mom doesn't have the resources to buy the birth control method of her choice, chances are she's not going to have that supportive network that she needs, that village that she and her partner, if he's there, need to raise that child. So I want to say, just like Councilwoman Viegron, this is about breaking cycles, breaking the cycle of poverty and giving people opportunities, and it is absolutely compassionate for us to offer this option and remove those barriers for the women who need it and to give opportunities to our youth. So I will be very supportive of this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sandoval. Councilman Trevino.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Bridger, I just want to say thank you. You know, you were hired to be our expert. You were hired to give us some recommendations. And as the local government body, we need to listen to our experts. You're gonna be making recommendations about air quality, suicide prevention, access to healthcare, and yes, teen pregnancy. We will never break any cycles regarding any of these issues if we don't listen to our experts. And I just want to say thank you to the comments, my council colleagues. Absolutely spot on. This is complex issues, and we need to listen to the folks that can give us expert opinions. This is not a belief system, this is evidence-based. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Trevino. And I'll just second the comments that have already been made by council members. Unfortunately, in political circles, this is, has been, and will be one of the most discussed topics in American life. But as we have seen already, this council, this city, will make decisions based on evidence and based on data. And so we have a motion and a second on the floor from Councilwoman Gonzalez for item 51. Please vote. Motion carries. All right, we are gonna move now to our 2:00 PM...